Okay, good evening. This is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Chelsea. Today is Tuesday, April 12th. I'm Janice Tatarca and I am joined here by Marilyn Vega, Joan Cromwell, John De Priest, Joe Mahoney, Hugo Perdomo, and Paulette Velezki. We will be starting today with case 2022-01, 244-248 Arlington Street, La Colaborativa Gladys Vega for special permit to change one conforming use to another, nonconforming use to another. Please, when you speak, if you come to speak, please be sure to speak into a microphone so that we will be recorded because this is being recorded. So keep that in mind. So who is here to speak on this matter? Please come up and introduce yourselves.
Right here or right here?
Wherever there's a microphone, you can speak.
Good day. How are you?
Hello.
I'm Anthony Quiles from Quiles and Associates. And basically, I'm here with Dini from La Colaborativa Gladys is not able to be here today for personal reasons, but we're here to present our project. And basically...
Let me just sort of, we went to the, we've heard you before.
Yes.
Gone to the planning board.
Yep.
And John, what did the planning board have to say?
The planning board recommended approval with a select number of conditions relative. At that time, Gladys had talked about extending the fence along the edge of the sidewalk. She said that she would look into extending it and that, uh, someone other, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, that's, and I just wanted to, so I just wanted to be clear in that and and remind you that when we left the meeting the last time, there was lack of clarity about the use of the restaurant.
Yes, that's correct.
So we want to clarify that, okay? So please go ahead.
So, so right now, so like, like I said, obviously, this is a special permit for a nonconforming use, from a nonconformant to a nonconforming use. It used to be a print shop and now it's going to be La Colaborativa. And the relief that we're searching for or looking to get granted is, you know, the food preparation area and the parking relief on this matter. Right now, I just wanted to go into the structure and the kitchen and then we'll talk about the use of the kitchen.
Okay.
So, right now, as you can see, we have, I believe, we have four parking spaces. They start at number one.
Anthony, you're not near his microphone, so he can't hear you. So you need to take the microphone.
You want me to take?
Sorry, Ricky.
That's all right.
Okay, let him get back there so he can do it. I think we have to leave it open, sir.
Hello? Okay, here we go. So, um, we're looking for the parking relief. It's a special permit and, and the kitchen because we're going from nonconformant to nonconformant. Parking spaces are here. It's 12 in total, okay? In the last meeting, we were talking about the fence. So the, the state already has a, a fence in front of the sidewalk, which is raw iron. And then we do have a fence around the property that we, we want to change, obviously, because of heights and other things, obviously, to, to make the place more attractive. The fence is a little antiquated at this point. When it comes to the site plan, any has, anyone has any questions on the site plan?
Just remind us again how many parking spaces you needed versus how many you have.
I know John is here. I believe there's, the, the occupancy load is only 20 people because we currently, La Colaborativa currently has a long-term lease in Broadway, which is, most of the operations are happening there. This is more about the food pantry and the staging area for any emergencies, which the city's going to be allowed to, to use also, like there's fires or anything like that. We used to use, I remember years ago, we used to use the YMCA. So now there's going to be a space in here once we look at the, at the kitchen plans.
I think John went to give...
John, that we can also use. There's going to be, there's another structure right here that's going to be the offices, okay? But there's only, the maximum load of occupancy is going to be 20 people right now. If that increases in 10 years from now, we'll go in front of the board, obviously, and ask for that relief at that point.
So with 10, the occupancy for 10, you're going to need what? How many parking spaces?
I, I believe, and, and John did the calculation. I think for 20 people, I want to say maybe it was 15 or 20, I, I gotta double check.
Okay, well, I'll tell him when he comes back. And are the ones on the side, on the, on the left-hand side there, are those tandem?
Yes, these are tandem.
Okay.
So we have pretty much, so out of the 12, so we have nine that are totally legal parking spaces and then we have three that are tandem at this point. We, we can also have more parking here. I recommend that maybe taking this structure down because there is a big parking area and maybe re, re, replacing it over here, but I think that's for the future. Right now, the collaborative only has two vehicles right now. No one has vehicles from all the employees. They all walk to the Colaborativa. And since this is so close to City Hall and is centrical, everyone's going to walk here. So, um, we're pretty excited. Since John's here, maybe I can ask...
John, I was asking them to confirm the number of parking spaces they need versus the number of parking spaces they're proposing. Don't talk until you get in front of a microphone.
So, for everyone's understanding, as, as the functionality of La Colaborativa right now in Broadway has zero parking. This will help out immensely. And I don't know if, if through the, the food services that we're providing for the community, you see the, sometimes the lines that are happening. We're going to provide a plan for all that to be staged here instead of outside of the sidewalk as is currently done right now. I believe it's Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
Correct.
So you need 25 parking spaces.
25 parking spaces.
Looks like you're providing for 25, but three of them are in...
No, they're providing for 12.
I'm sorry, for 12, but three of them are in tandem.
That's correct.
So you need extra relief for that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So now I want to go, if we could go to the, to the kitchen?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the main entrance is going to be located in the center of the building. This is an open area space for any emergencies that the city needs or La Colaborativa or any, it's going to be an open space. The kitchen is right here. So we, we put it here just because we wanted the windows in the corner and window in the front so everyone could see it. This kitchen, there was a little confusion at the beginning that there was some ideas that people were going to use the kitchen for some sort of business, but that's not the case at all. This kitchen is, is basically for training purposes. Right now, we don't have a schedule for how many classes or any of that because it's, it's a trial basis. The first time La Colaborativa has a kitchen. So we're going to try to probably program as, we're going to start probably a class, I'm thinking, maybe three times a week and see the demand for it. So basically, and I'm going to have Dini talk a little bit about that, but we, what we want to do is, is provide a service that the community can come here, pick up a box with food. And that box is, is designed for someone with high blood pressure or diabetes. And we're going to provide the classes in how to cook these foods in order to meet the necessity of the community so they could live a healthier life. I'm going to pass over to Dini.
Don't speak unless you have the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to give this to Dini.
And introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Dini Paulino. I'm the CEO of La Colaborativa.
Thank you.
We are trying to tailor our food, the food that we are providing to our community, to teach our residents how to cook in a healthy manner.
So again, I just want to clarify because I was, I was the one who I think was probably most unclear about the use of the kitchen last time.
It's not, sorry, it's not a restaurant?
No, it's, and it's not a restaurant and it's not going to be used for catering or preparing for parties?
I want to clarify that, where that came from. So there's an idea which is still in the works that we want to provide, we, the kitchen's going to be for training. So let's say that someone wants to be a chef, wants to learn how to cook. So we want to see if, we're going to bring in private companies maybe to teach classes on how to cook so those people can take those skills and bring it into the market. That, that's what...
So training, a training kitchen.
Training, it's all, exactly, teaching and training. So that somehow got interpreted that these people are going to obviously make money when they go out to the, to the job market and whatnot. But that's where that came, so there was a little confusion and I'm glad we clarified it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anything else before I open it up? Ask the board if they have questions. Do we have questions from the board? It's still a public hearing and I will be opening it again to the public in a moment, but let me ask the board first if they have questions. Marilyn?
So I wanted to ask about the classes. You said, how many times a week would they be?
We, no, we provide the food pantry, provide food to the community three times a week.
So if you're going to be having classes, like how many days a week?
So, so we don't have the plans yet, but we are looking at two to three times per week.
Okay.
Evil mirror, the same boxes that we provide to the community on that day, as an example.
And the space that's vacant is going to stay vacant? Or is it going to be used for storage or anything like that?
Is that open space?
Okay.
For emergency cases?
Okay.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean?
So currently, we do, for example, RAF application.
Say that again?
RAF application, housing assistance.
Okay, but that's a use that probably needs approval, no?
No, this is application. People coming in for triage.
So let's, let's say, let's say there's a fire, right? And there's five buildings involved and there's nowhere in the city where we could, the Red Cross could put a few people, 10 or 20 people, to help them get housing, like hotels and whatnot, which is usually like a three or four-hour period when these emergencies happens. This is just open space. We're saying that it could be used for that.
It's not, they wouldn't be living there. They would be getting placed or...
Absolutely not, absolutely not. This is just a staging area if needed. If not, then it would be unoccupied, basically. The, the food pantry would be on this side. So the food pantry is on this side. We're going to have racks here where they could put all the food, you know, in pallets. And this is where it's going to be distributed. We're trying, so to eliminate the sidewalk issues where you can, I mean, I think everybody's seen the sidewalks with all, a lot of people, is creating a staging area where the person could come in through the front door, pick up his, the box of food, get all the literacy and all the information for the classes and then they could probably exit through the back or even through the front. So we're working on that plan right now. But this is pretty much the, the open area so they could pick up food or if there's an emergency after hours that the city needs to use it. It's just an open area right now.
But you know, I mean, like, obviously, the reason we ask these questions is because you want to make sure that you're properly permitted.
That's correct.
We're not commenting that you should or shouldn't do it. It's making clear what it is you're looking for.
Yeah.
So that we can ensure that whatever you're doing is in a...
Absolutely, absolutely. So we don't, we, right now, the purpose is not set 100%, but we know it's an open area for emergency services. That's it.
Okay, so are you going to have, like, employees there, like overnight?
The employees are going to be in the office in the next door building, which has about 10 offices. This area, the only employees that are going to be here, the people training in the kitchen and any of the employees in the food pantry that might bring, you know, the, with the pallets and bringing down the food and boxing them and whatnot.
So what's the total number of employees?
20, maximum 20 people. And not to say that the 20 people are going to be here. We have another structure. So maybe reality, if, if you go on Mondays there, I think there's probably seven or eight people in this building. That's it.
But that would be the number of people who work there, not necessarily the number of people who are in there.
That's correct.
Again, I, I think we have maximum occupancy or whatever for the, if people are going to be coming in to pick up food or to do preparation, then that could be more than that. So it's not that you could have potentially more than 20 people in there at any one time.
Could be, could be, yeah. So obviously, I, I don't know how they calc, they calculated the load base of, because on employees is going to be no more than 20 people here. So in a case of emergency on a class, a class, I could imagine, I'm looking at two, two, six, no more than 10 in that class, I'm thinking, so...
So you could potentially have 30 people there.
In the building, that's correct.
But not permanent, some people?
That is correct.
Does that mean we're talking about...
So I think we've got to define the difference between, you know, the occupancy load of the structure based on the square footage and, and the actually occupancy load of people that are going to be working.
As long as, I don't know, if part of the permit requires us to identify the number of people, then that could be an issue. If it doesn't, then we're okay. It's because obviously, it's a big building.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of making sure, again, that the permit meets your needs.
That's correct. And the classes are going to be in the evening. So we're going to have 10 people in the classes. This whole area is going to be closed. There's no one, no one's going to be there. The food pantry is, it starts around, what time on Mondays? Yeah, 11 and ends? 3 o'clock. So 11 to 3, and they're all outside. So, you know, we're just trying, trying to get creative ideas of maybe we could do this in the inside, but we could keep it in the outside the way we're doing it right now, but stage it outside in the parking area.
Okay. Marilyn, any more questions? Anybody else have questions? You go.
Where the trash going to be? Are you planning to have any dumpster or anything?
Yes, yes.
Where?
We're going to have, if you go to the site plan, John, again, it's, it's, we're planning to put it, we had two designated areas, one in the back. And obviously, because we don't have the amount of, excuse me? Yeah, the site plan. I think it's... And we could, and we could put that... So we will plan to have the trash back here, somewhere back here. We're going to, because this space right here, I think it's about maybe seven or eight feet. So we could take it out through there or through here. Right now, we only have two vehicles and we plan not to have that many vehicles because of the staging for the people to pick up the food. So this would be empty, even though we designated parking for there. So the trash would be here and we roll it out this way. So we have plenty of space in the facility to do that. We just haven't designated exactly where, but that's what we're planning to do.
Any overnight truck trailers parked?
No, overnight, we have, right now, we have two trailers that were, that, that were rented. They're, they park at the state property. And the reason why we have those trailers is because we don't have the, the coolers installed here. We're waiting for the process to go through in order to install the coolers. That way, we get rid of these two trailers that we have currently leased right now. So there will be no trailers in this property, only two vehicles. We have two vans, I believe that's what we have, right? Yeah, yeah.
Are those trees that shows on the plan on the property, those trees?
These trees?
Yeah.
These trees in the property, but right now, it's, it's actually damaging this building in the garage in the back. So we're going to take that tree down. I believe these two trees are still there and we're not going to, I don't think we're going to remove them. We are doing some greenery in the front, so, and that's something that we're going to do on the design review to make sure, you know, we want to make sure this place is beautiful.
Okay.
Any other questions? Joan?
For, for, so for food storage? You said it's stored in the trailers now. So the food pantry, in terms of the boxes, they come in daily and go out. They're distributed and so there's no excess food? And if there is, where would that be stored?
So the food that we receive come the day that it's meant to be delivered. So if there's any, which we hardly have any left, will be stored in the fridge, in the refrigerator?
Yeah, we're going to have two walk-in coolers, two big walk-in coolers in, in the property. I think in this picture, it doesn't reflect it, but there is, there's a big walk-in cooler that's going to be here. There's a big walk-in cooler here and actually, there's going to be a cooler here. These two bathrooms are going to be moved to the back and that's something I'm going to send, John, in order to facilitate the other cooler right here. That way, we get rid of the tractor trailers that we are currently leasing.
Okay, so the tractor trailers come, they park, distribute all the food, and then they leave?
So reality, there's no tractor trailers, it's just trucks, little box trucks.
Trucks, okay.
They, they drop off because we don't, we don't want tractor trailers there. We do have those two leased because we need the cooling space.
Okay. And so the food pantry is three times a week, right? From 11 to 3? And then the classes would be, like in the evening, around 6:00 PM?
Exactly.
So for the residents that, you're teaching them healthy cooking, would that be on the days of the food pantry? That they would get their box, go into the kitchen, prepare the food and take it home to eat?
Well, it's going to be in the evening, so they got to sign up. There's going to be a signup process. So basically, they'll pick up their food and most likely, they'll come back to the class. Obviously, we're going to minimize it to a certain amount of people. We think in 10, you know, per class. So hopefully, we could get a lot of classes here because that's, that's the goal here, to teach our community how to have a healthy cooking. But right now, we're going to start with three classes.
Would you like to have more than three classes? Again, you're asking right now, you want three classes. Are you, and if we approve three classes, are you saying then that means...
No, we're going to start the program with those three classes and depending on the demand, we're going to increase.
Okay, so we don't have to limit that, is what you're asking? You're asking that we not limit that?
Absolutely. We don't, we don't want to limit that because we don't know. I mean, the more teach, the more we could teach our community how to cook healthier, I think the better it is.
Okay, thank you.
And the classes are going to be hybrid. We hoping to maximize their resources by providing them also Zoom opportunities as well.
Okay. Say that again?
Zoom, through Zoom, also hybrid.
Oh, okay, through Zoom, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so part of the design kitchen, which we will, we will send to John part of the design review, we're going to have monitors and TVs and we're going to be able to record them and basically have a live Zoom for people that can't access the kitchen that day. They could go through Zoom and, and watch everything.
Would you tape them and Zoom them on, like, Facebook or something?
That's a great plan. I mean, right now is to do it live, but I, I would entertain taping them. That'd be awesome.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before I open it up to the public? This is still a public hearing. It is open to the public. Is, this would be your last opportunity to speak on this. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? I think we will, we will recognize the city manager.
So I just briefly wanted to say I'm in full support of the petitioner's request for zoning relief. La Colaborativa has been a spectacular partner to the city, in particular, through the course of this pandemic. And this relocation of the food pantry here will not only advance their mission, but it will improve the city's own ability to provide emergency services in situations where there are residents in crisis. So I strongly urge the board to support this petition.
Thank you. Anybody else? That being said, I am going to close the public portion of this hearing. Is, are, do we wish to vote on this, people? My answer would be yes, we do.
Yeah, I have one more question if possible.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there anything for, like, like rodent? Because there is food there, even though they're giving away the food, but if there is trash, any, any, like, pest control plan in place? Yes, please, yes.
That's, that's a really good question. We are having a pest control company be part of the program.
Okay, great.
Perfect, thank you.
And trash has been picked up twice a week instead of once.
Thank you.
If you would like, you could put that as a condition that they provide us a pest control plan.
I'd like that, thank you.
No open space, right, in the building? No, no office space in the building?
In this building, we do have some small office space, but it's mostly for...
It's, it's, it's here, there. Let me get the microphone, sorry.
There's a mezzanine here, right here, right above, where are we? Yes, there's a mezzanine right here, the coolers right here, and there's an office right here, which is pretty much for the people that are doing all the movement of the pallets and all that, so they have a phone. But the office building is the building next door.
It's not part of the...
Yeah, yeah, so we want to minimize the amount of people in this structure. Only, we only want to use it when we're doing the food and the classes. Every other activity is going to be in the other property.
Okay, John, does the planning department have recommendations on special condit, on conditions for this?
Yes, standard conditions as applicable. Pursue extension of the steel picket fence at the edge of the sidewalk. Provide a landscape plan for review and approval. The kitchen is, shall be used only for training purposes and provide a pest control plan to my department for review and approval.
And do we have, we don't have to mention the tandem parking or we do have to...
Well, tandem parking would be the...
It's part of the conditions, that's...
Would be the relief that you're, tandem condition would be part of the relief you're providing a special permit.
And I would just, I would add to that just by saying, by recognizing that the kitchen being used for training purposes only, only, also includes training people on how to properly cook. So I don't want to get confused that one is a test and one, yeah. So based on those conditions, do we have a motion? Joe made a motion.
I make a motion that case number 202001, 244-248 Arlington Street, be approved based on the conditions set forth.
Do I have a second? Second, Marilyn, all in favor? I, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, they have to write it up. Oh, and site plan approval, obviously.
Absolutely. We'll send the site plan to John.
Site plan approval is not required here.
Oh, it's not, not site plan, I mean, well, didn't you want to look at...
Yes, I planned.
Lay out, no?
Yeah, oh, that's part of the design review.
Okay, design review, that's what I meant.
The design review.
That's what I meant.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. The next case is in front of us is 20, 2022-02361 Broadway, ARX BCLC, for special permit invariances for the demolition of a garage parking structure and the construction of an addition and the conversion of an existing residential structure and commercial structure from 19 residential units to 62 residential units. We, this has also gone to the planning, planning board. What did the planning board have to say, John?
The planning board did approve the, the site plan and recommended approval of the special permit with a number of conditions, which I can go over at that appropriate time.
And recognize, guys, that this is a variance too. So we will be asking you the conditions for a variance, all of which must be answered in the affirmative or, and that's the requirement, state requirement, that they all have to be answered in the affirmative. So you have to be prepared when we get to that point to answer that, okay?
Noted. Unfortunately, our zoning council was exposed to COVID and given this is the first in-person, in-person meeting, I will be playing lawyer tonight as well as, as affordable housing developer. So I will do my best and if I need to phone a friend, I might...
Okay.
I, I might call her in if, if any technical matters are, are needed. But good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair. My name is Benji Maul. I'm one of the principals of ARX Urban. We are thrilled to be here tonight with you after four or five years of planning on the site to try to figure out a redevelopment. We'll speak briefly about the, the site and go back through the architecture, which we did a, a few months ago. I'm here tonight with, with Jim Podeski from the architectural team, Chelsea-based architecture firm, as well as Daniel Maul, who is head of construction and asset management for our firm. Next slide, please. So just briefly, ARX Urban is a local real estate developer. We've completed 17 projects around the greater Boston area. We are socially minded and our goal is to create both naturally occurring and income-restricted affordable housing around the Commonwealth. And our partner is a Revere-based minority business named Boston Communities, which we're excited to partner with on the project and has a depth of tax credit experience. Next slide. So everyone's familiar generally with the site. It is extremely walkable, 97 walk score. It is extremely walkable, 97 walk score, right in the heart of downtown Chelsea. Next slide, please. And just briefly, makes up roughly half a city block on, at the intersection of Broadway and Fourth Street, with an existing mixed-use building with 19 loft-style apartments over commercial square footage. And then there is a parking garage behind the building that is in disrepair. Next slide. So when we acquired the building six years ago, the intent was always to try to find a higher and better use for this, the parking garage, which makes up such a large part of this downtown block. Next slide. So an overview of the project. It is 62 units total, 43 units on the garage addition, and then 19 existing units in the historic building that were renovated almost 20 years ago, and will be renovated again during this project to make them income-restricted for workforce housing tenants, tenants earning roughly 80% of AMI. The new building will be, consists of 43 units, the majority of which are low-income housing tax credit units, 29 of which are affordable for families earning 60% of AMI and below, nine which will be affordable for families earning below, at 30% of AMI and below, and then five market-rate units, which we think is important to have in every project so that as tenants graduate out of their income-restricted units, they don't have to be displaced from the building, and they can have market-rate units. So we, that is something that we pride ourselves on having at least some market-rate units in every one of our projects. Right now, there is 11,000, just over 11,000 square feet of retail space with six units. We are very proud that during COVID, we worked with all the tenants and were able to retain all of these tenants who have been at the building from between seven and 14 years. And one of the important parts of our development program is that we anticipate keeping all of the retail tenants in place with below-market rents to make sure that their businesses are sustainable over the long, the long term. And just to note that the existing affordable mix significantly exceeds the city's IDP requirements, and that three of the 60% of AMI units will actually be, will allow for income qualifications for tenants that meet the 50% of AMI guidelines, which was something that we worked very hard with the planning department to figure out the nuance so that it all fits within the potential sources and uses from the city and the state. Next slide. I think we talked about this last time, but the building originally was built in 1916 after the Great Fire of 1908 burnt, burnt it down. And it's been a cornerstone of Bellingham Square for more than the last century, with hosting numerous uses, both commercial and residential. And then since 1988, there's been four or five different proposals from various real estate developers trying to make a project work, some as high as 138 units and high-rise tower here. So what we're proposing, we believe, is modest relative to that, and, and we believe is really additive to the community in the sense that, you know, giving our imminent housing crisis. Next slide. So again, just quickly, our project goals, affordability, we talked about that, preserving the existing retailers, sustainable construction. This will be Enterprise Green certified. The new building will likely achieve passive house standards. Well, the building will be fossil fuel-free and will be powered by solar PV array on the roof. And then we really wanna upgrade the pedestrian experience around the building, and that's something that we're incredibly excited about. And we've been working with Mimi Graney to add a bunch of street art to the existing building, and we hope to take that one step further during this redevelopment. And in doing so, we'll be supporting local artists. So we've met with a lot of groups, community groups, over the past six months, and I believe have a plethora of letters of support that have been submitted to the board. Next slide, please. So I guess I will give it up to our architect, Jim, to, to walk through the plans briefly, and then I will talk about the zoning relief required and the criteria necessary.
So Jim, if you're gonna get up, could you take the handheld with you? You're not gonna get up? Okay. Okay.
So my name is Jim Podeski, I'm with the architectural team. I'll quickly just sort of walk through the plans describing. So this is the first floor plan, the ground floor plan. At the top, you'll see the existing building with the retail spaces that Benji mentioned. The, the retail spaces are pretty much staying as-is. And the, the separation between the, the existing building and the, the addition is like an alley, alleyway space running left to right. So the bottom area, planned south, is the addition, the new addition. So the new addition on this level is primarily a parking garage, which contains 25 parking spaces. Also on this level, on the left, you'll see a lobby, that's the main entry lobby for the building. That'll be the, the mail room. And you'll, you see a vestibule there, and, and the elevator, the main elevator to get to the, the upper floors. Also on this level is the trash room, you see, the electrical room and the mechanical room for the building. Also, the entry and the exit for the garage on Division Street. You can see, we kept it as far away as we could from Fourth Street for safety. And in the garage also, we have bicycle parking. I think 43 spaces of bicycle parking. You'll see in a slide later on what we propose for those bicycle parking spaces. Next slide. This is the second level of the building. Again, the existing building on the top. This is a moderate rehab of the existing units. Basically, you know, kitchens and baths, and an upgrade of the mechanical system to improve energy efficiency. Upgrade of the exterior, repointing of the brick, new windows, things like that. And the addition is connected to the existing building. On the left, you'll see the corridor where it's connected. And also on this level, it's connected through a landscaped courtyard area. You'll see that sort of Z-shaped area that it's connected by. And the whole bottom area is the, the new addition with new, with units. A mix of units, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. And you'll see that as we go up as well. Also on this area is an amenity space to be used by the building. And that is only on this level. Next slide. This is a typical floor, floors, you know, three through six. You can see, again, a mix of two bedrooms and three bedrooms and studios. This, this is a typical floor that stacks all the way up. Next slide. This is the roof level. We show anticipated mechanical, mechanical units for the all-electric HVAC system, ERV units, and a generator for the elevator. Also elevator penthouse and the elevator machine room. The leftover space, we're showing solar PV space as much as we can to power the, the house loads for the building, for the electrical loads. Next slide. This is a rendering of the building from Fourth Street, or from the corner of Broadway and Fourth, showing the renovation of the existing building mostly. You know, new windows, refurbishment of the building, repointing. You can see the addition in the, in the background, but the next slide shows the addition a little better. So this is a rendering of the building from Fourth Street, showing the entryway at the bottom with a, with a canopy. That's the main entry at the bottom on the corner of Division and Fourth. So you can see, it's a contemporary design. A lot of brick on this facade, sort of mirroring the brick in the neighborhood. And the rest of the materials are cement fiber, clapboard and panel, with a sort of bay element on the corner with a lot of windows. And it was mentioned that artwork along Division Street on the, on the sidewalk, you can kind of see it in the rendering, but we're continuing, there's artwork there now. We're continuing to provide those, that artwork on the, on the street level. Next slide. This is a 2D rendering of the Fourth Street elevation, showing the existing building on the left, new addition on the right. You can also, this is a, you can see the signage over the canopy a little more clearly than the rendering. Sort of, we proposed 10-inch high, you know, you can see the cursor, 10-inch high signage over the, over the canopy with LED lighting below it. Next slide. This is a slide showing the proposed bicycle parking at the garage level. On the left is the vertical stacked parking, bike parking. And on the right is the individual bike parking over each parking space. Next slide.
Did you say there's gonna be a bike, vertical bike rack next, on top of each parking space? So with each parking space?
On, on the right, there, there was 10 spaces, so, so there's one, one bike, one bike parking space over each car.
So that could be somebody else's bike, or does the bike, the bike in the car have to go together?
It's anticipated that each, the car, each car would own that bike. Yeah. Yeah, for the 33 on the left, that would be the more public, the more, you know, for, for, for the people who are not parked there. This slide shows the, the exterior lighting proposed. So that wall pack on the upper right is proposed for the exterior entries, exterior exits, and also above the, the entry-exit for the parking exit-entry. Also, it shows that bottom right, the canopy, underneath the canopy lighting, LED fixture. All dark, all dark sky compliant. Turn it over to Benji.
All right, now the fun part.
Right, so the variance, well, you wanna walk through the variance stuff?
Yes, I will. So as shown on this slide, we require, I'll walk through everything at once. For special permits...
But it's actually the variances we wanna go through. The, the variances are first the hard part, okay? The variances, so we can, let's address those first.
Sure.
Since those are both, they're for rear yard issues and for open space. So you have to meet, so let's go through each one of these conditions, which we're going to read, and you're going to describe to us why you need the variance, that, you know, you meet this. So the variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district, district in which it is located. So tell me why you need that variance for the setbacks.
Sure, this, the site is unique in that it has an existing mixed-use building, separated from the existing garage structure by a passageway running the entire length of the site, that at the ground floor is used currently by retail tenants for access to egress, removal of trash, and also for the project's mechanical and electrical rooms as it exists today. In order to maintain the necessary access and egress, the project retains this passageway, leaving 10 feet between the existing building and the new construction. The bisected site is a unique condition specific to the site and the layout of the structures that directly impacts our ability to comply with the open space requirements of the ordinance. I would also note that the open space zoning deficiency is to a large degree owing to the historic preservation and rehabilitation of 19 units on the site, another condition that's unique to the site and not the neighborhood or zoning district generally.
So again, let me just sort of summarize. So you're basically saying, we, we can't add to the backyard or anything because basically, we're building on top of the existing building?
Yes, that's where the, yes.
Does, do everybody agree that that answers that? Yes. Okay, number two. No? Yeah, everybody, I saw nods. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
It would, it would literally be impossible from a financial standpoint to build this project without that rear yard setback. That rear yard setback is a pre-existing non-conforming condition, and so if we didn't have, if, if we didn't have that, there would be no building that we could...
You'd have to knock the building down.
Well, you would knock the building down, but yeah, you'd have to knock the existing building down, and you wouldn't be able to build anything back in its place.
Okay, do we agree? Do we agree? Yes. A desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is the easy one, guys. The answer to this usually is, and you can tell me if this is true, it's actually good for the public that you're doing this, because it's affordable housing.
That, that is exactly what I was gonna say. I was gonna say that we are building 38 low-income units and retaining six in-place businesses that, preventing them from displacement over the long period of time. So we're hopeful it is good for the public good.
Do we agree?
Thank you for your assistance.
Yes, yes, on the side. Next, and last, but never least, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
So the project proposes to rehabilitate and modernize an existing structure and to replace a one-story garage with a sustainable building, providing much kneatable, needing affordable and other housing. The requesting relief with respect to open space is very modest, and in fact, will increase the open space from the current site conditions. The rear yard nonconformity is a pre-existing condition which will not be exacerbated by the project, and that the, you know, among the stated objectives of the ordinance are to encourage housing for all persons of all income levels and to conserve value of land and buildings.
It is in fact consistent with what you believe is proposed by the chapter.
Yes, that's...
Is that what you're saying?
That is, was literally my lawyer's next words. This is consistent with what is being proposed in the objectives of the ordinance.
Do we have a yes on that, guys? Sounds to me like you've met the hard part.
Thank you.